Good evening. Welcome to the June 4, 2024 City Council Meeting. The meeting is hereby called to order. Members of the public may attend this City Council Meeting in person or may watch and listen remotely by viewing the meeting on Channel 8 WCTV and at the city's website at www.yz.org/wctv. Public comment during the public forum and/or public hearing portions of the meeting may be provided in person at the meeting in advance or by logging into the Zoom call and raising your hand during the public hearing. When your name is called in the meeting, you will be seen and heard in our council chambers and the cable channel. You will be asked to unmute, and then you may begin your comment. All public comments must include your full name and address. Second item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask everyone to please stand if able and follow along. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The third item on the agenda this evening is the roll call. All members of the council are present with the exception of Councilmember Iverson, who has an excused absence. Next item is to approve the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as is, or would anyone care to make any changes?
I'll move to approve the agenda as is.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, the motion passes, and we will move on to the public forum. As a reminder for those members of the public in attendance this evening who are interested in speaking, we ask that you please state your name, address, indicate if you are representing a group, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. If the item you wish to speak about is something that is on the agenda, for those that are in person, please fill out a form on the table in the back of the room and hand it to staff. For those that are watching via Zoom, please send a note via chat to staff and let them know which agenda item you wish to speak on. We will also require that your camera is turned on when you speak. City manager, do we have any cards that have been turned in or anyone on Zoom who would like to speak?
Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay. Then we will move on to the next agenda item, which is item number six. Council, do any of you have any new agenda items that you'd like to discuss or bring up at a future meeting? No? All right. Moving right along to the next item is the approval of the consent agenda. And this evening on the consent agenda, we have the following items. We have approval of the check register, approval of municipal licenses, approval of the second reading and adoption of ordinance 837, animals to allow keeping of chickens. We have approval of second reading and adoption of ordinance 838, city code amendments to Chapter 936, tree preservation. And lastly, adoption of Resolution 20-2024 accepting a donation of public safety equipment from the YZDA Fire Relief Association. Members of the council, do any of you have any questions on those consent agenda items or wish to pull an item for further discussion at the end of the meeting?
I have a quick question.
Yes, Councilmember Parkill.
So on item C, I'm looking at section nine in the revised ordinance that prohibits butchering of chickens. Is that for personal use or just for business use? So can you butcher your own chicken like you can eat your own eggs?
Interesting question, Councilmember Parkill. I guess I'll just say that you can't utilize chickens for a business. That requires a separate approval, so it'd just be for your own personal use.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Then may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Madam Mayor?
Thank you.
Second.
It's been first and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. That takes us to new business, and the first item under new business is item 8A. Consider adoption of Resolution 18-2024 providing for the sale of general obligation tax increment financing bonds, series 2024A. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Deputy City Manager Jaeger is going to introduce this item and our consultant that's here with us today as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. A couple meetings ago, you may remember that the council authorized basically the call for the sale to reissue what were temporary TIF bonds. Back in 2023, when we were getting ready to construct Phase 2 of Panaway, we issued temporary bonds. Those can only be held for three years and are to be paid for from TIF District 6. Now that we know that state bonding dollars aren't on the table for that project, we're ready to go ahead and make these permanent bonds. Doing that now will allow us basically to capture about $300,000 of capitalized interest to write down the bonds. And with us tonight is Jason Arzold from Ellers, who can give a report to the council on the bond sale that happened earlier today.
Wonderful. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council. I'm Jason Arzold with Ellers. And yeah, so we did have been working with your staff on the sale of these bonds. One of the steps that we took in order to do that was to obtain a rating from Standard and Poor's, as we have in the past, for other issues that you've had for the city. Happy to report that S&amp;P affirmed the city's AAA rating, which of course is the highest rating that they assign. And in doing so, again, just, you know, reference the strength of the city's economy, the, you know, good policies that you all have in place, and then the strong management of the organization. So something to be, I guess, proud of. And then I think also that tends to reflect well when we go out to market to issue these bonds. These were sold on a competitive basis. So we took bids in our office today at 10:30 and then tabulated those. There were five bidders. And in this case, the lowest bidder was Piper Sandler and Company with a rate of 3.8476%. And so at the time of pre-sale, when we outlined the proposed issue, we were estimating maybe around 4.1%. So did a little better in the market today than what had been projected in that report. One other thing to note, there was a bit of a premium with these bonds. What that means is that the purchaser wanted to pay more than the face value of the bonds. So what we can do in that case is actually reduce the par amount that is being issued. So you'll see in a revised resolution, excuse me, that's in front of your diocer today, that the amount has been reduced. But we still net the same amount of proceeds to be able to refund the old bond. So another good outcome, and that's why when you do the math, we get to that, a new rate after the adjustment of about 3.85%. And so the action before you this evening is to adopt a resolution awarding the sale of the bond $6,205,000. And so I'd be happy, though, to, I'll stop and answer any questions that you have about the process or about this bond sale in particular.
Excellent. Thank you. One quick question that comes to mind, just procedurally. What would motivate someone to want to pay more than what we're asking to borrow?
Mayor and the council, it's a good question. Would they do that in exchange for higher individual interest rates on the bonds? And that just protects those investors against increasing interest rates in the future? They prefer to have a hold, they prefer to hold a bond with a higher individual annual coupon. And so they pay more than the face value at a higher interest rate, and then we calculate what that is in terms of a yield back to you, what you're actually, what the debt is actually costing you. And that's how we evaluate how to award the bid.
Wonderful. And then any prepayment penalties on this? Would we be able to pay it off in advance if we had the funds early?
There is a call date, Mayor, and members of the council. These are not callable for a 10-year period of time. And so after that 10-year period runs, then you could call them at any point or refinance them after that, after that point.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Yes, Councilmember Parkill?
Yep. So my question is, the 295 that we're getting, that's what we're getting back, right? From the sale of the short-term bonds?
Correct.
So let's just round it to 300,000. That, we're not getting that money. We're getting it, but then we have to turn around and pay it for year one and year two, right? So it's not a positive for us. I mean, it's a positive that we, I mean, we wouldn't have to pay it twice, but it's not like we're gaining 300,000 that we can go spend. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, and members of the council. The, those dollars are being, they are there and available. We're using them to help repay the outstanding bonds that exist today. And so we are borrowing less with this new issue as a result. So we are able to have a smaller bond issue by using those funds now on a permanent basis.
Is it 300,000 less?
Yeah, about 295,000.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay. Good. I had another question, but I can't think of it right now, so go ahead. It's for staff, anyway.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And appreciate the work that you and Stacy and the rest of the team at Ellers do on our behalf in these issues. So thank you very much. All right. Well, any luck recalling the question because I'm about to call for a motion?
I did. As soon as I said that, I really. When can we start pulling TIF 6 money? Or is there a gap in, like, the 50,000 that we pay in the first year, in 2025? Is that TIF 6 money?
I'm going to look towards Deputy City Manager Jaeger, but my, I, but yes, this will all be paid for by TIF 6, starting now, essentially.
Yeah. Councilmember Parkill, that's a great question. So as we do our annual TIF cash flow analysis, we're basically looking at how much cash is the district generating on an annual basis compared to the obligations we have against the district? So we have PEGO, obligations to developers, but we also have, in this case, debt. So there is, and we also have an internal fund loan for construction of the Lakenberry parking lot. So the way we've set up our TIF district is we will pay all those obligations except for our internal fund loan first out of the cash we have in this district. So yeah, it's all going to come from TIF District 6. It's just, we haven't fully met the obligation to pay back our internal fund loan, but we have enough cash to pay all of our obligations.
Okay, so the 293 that we're going to be paying in 2025, August 1st, let's say, that's all TIF 6?
Correct.
And everything down this, I guess it would be 9.5 million will be TIF 6?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Great questions. All right. Seeing that there are no other questions on the matter, there is a motion before us to adopt resolution relating to these tax increment bonds. Would someone care to make that motion?
So moved?
All right. So this is a motion to adopt Resolution 18-2024, resolution relating to the $6,205,000 general obligation tax increment bonds, series 2024A, and authorizing the issuance, awarding the sale, fixing the form and details, and providing for the execution and delivery thereof and security therefore. Was that your motion, Councilmember Parkill?
Yes. Sorry, I didn't take that off your hands to read it.
I just want to confirm. All right. So that was the motion. Is there a second?
I'll do the easy part. I'll second that.
Perfect. We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. Thank you very much. We'll take us to our next item under new business, and that is item 8B. To consider adoption of Resolution 19-2024, approving setback variance at 425 Highcroft Road. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our Assistant Planner Quarles is going to walk us through this item.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Tonight, we'll be talking about Resolution 19-2024, approving a setback variance over on Highcroft Road. The project is located in the Highcroft neighborhood and is located on the corner of PV Road and Highcroft Road. The satellite images you'll see throughout this presentation are actually of the previous home because the satellite images are from 2022, and there's been a tear down and new construction since then. The property, along with the rest of the neighborhood, is zoned R1A and guided estate single family. And the original conditions on this property are that it's about 1.2 acres. This is a little bit undersized for R1A, which we usually ask for 80,000 square feet. But like most of the lots in this neighborhood, that size is legally non-conforming. The original home on this lot was built in 1960, and that home did not confirm or conform to the PV Road setback. That condition was approved through Resolution 19-2006, and that was for a new attached garage. You can see up in the corner there that that new attached garage was about 30 feet from PV Road. The findings for that variance did note the curvature of PV Road as a unique condition of the property, but that home was demolished in 2022 to make way for new construction. And then just to show there. So the permitting history for this property, which is why we're here today, is that in June of 2023, a building permit was issued for a new home. You can see that that home, as shown there, is compliant with all of the building setbacks, the front yard setbacks off of PV Road and off of Highcroft Road. On corner lots, we do front yard setbacks for all of the right-of-way. The survey itself, as submitted, shows a front yard setback on Highcroft Road and a side yard setback on PV Road. This went ahead and was approved because at the time, the building, as shown, complied with the 50-foot front yard setback requirement anyway, or the 45-foot front yard requirement anyway. So we went from there. However, in, later, a little bit later in 2023, there was an adjusted plan set submitted with the home moved north, just directly north, which ended up, due to the curvature of PV Road, decreasing that PV Road setback down to somewhere in the neighborhood of about 41 feet for two of the corners of the house. We did a little bit of extra plan review because there was an amended plan set submitted, and this condition was missed. This was in part because that side yard setback shown was not amended from the previous plan set. So you glance at it, you see it's inside the red line. It seems to be compliant with the setback. That is a staff error. That was approved, and construction began. In February of 2024, there was a plan set with some landscaping updates submitted. At that time, staff noted that the PV Road setback was out of compliance. But at that point, the affected corners, those corners that are about 41 feet away from PV Road, had already been partially constructed. So the development application proposal in front of us is to keep the home exactly where it is, to continue to build the new home within the front yard setback. So what that ends up looking like is a variance of four feet off of the required front yard setback of 45 feet, to be about 41 feet from that front property line instead of 45. Conveniently, these images are overlaid over the original satellite images that we were looking at earlier from Hennepin County. So you actually get a really good idea of how the home as it exists today relates to the home as it was in 2022. As we mentioned, that home also had a setback variance. So this is a condition that was already existing in the neighborhood. But the important thing to note about the setback is just exactly what areas of the home are encroaching in that setback. So you can see a little triangle on the north side of the cabana structure, which is next to the pool, encroaches on that setback. And then on the south side, you can see that there's a corner of the garage that encroaches on that setback. And reconstructing both of those corners would involve removing and redesigning those two portions of the house in order to comply. For a little bit more context, you can see on the floor plan sort of exactly where that line would cut through. It'd be the third stall of the garage. And not only would it be the room in the cabana itself, but also a pretty tall chimney structure, which is pretty monumental. And then an elevation there for reference, just so you can see exactly what parts of the house that affects. And we have the advantage of knowing exactly what it looks like within the setback because it's partially built. So the first image is if you're standing on PV Road, you can see both of those corners. And then the other two images are standing much closer to those corners, and you get an idea of the scale and exactly where those are. Neighborhood notification standard. We don't require a neighborhood meeting for variances alone. By this meeting, we've received three positive public comments. They're all from immediate neighbors of the property. They're, you know, including the neighbors that are just across the street. Six neighbors, three of them have commented. We haven't gotten a comment from directly across from the affected corners, but we have gotten them from most of the other views of that area of the house. And then there are no comments from other departments. The Planning Commission discussed it at their May 6th meeting and voted for or to recommend approval of the variance. They were looking at the fact that the previous home was located closer to the street as well, seeing a lack of impact on neighborhood character in part because of that, and then noting the practical difficulty that the applicants experiencing due to the construction and the existing location of those corners. So the proposed motion would be to adopt Resolution 19-2024, approving the setback variance. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Quarles. Council questions for staff? No? All right. Well, seeing that there are no questions, would anyone have, does anyone have any thoughts that they would like to share with regard to this application?
I'll chime in. Heck of a way to meet a new neighbor of mine, just a few houses down. Was, it's a no-brainer for me. I mean, it's, the house is going up. It's a lot nicer than the last one, which was a pretty nice house. It has absolutely no impact on the neighborhood. It's a beautiful home. I'm anxious to see it get started again, so very much in favor of it.
Thank you, Councilmember Plekish. Anybody else?
Thanks, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Plekish. This seems reasonable, and I also am in favor of approving this setback variance.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilmember?
I'm in favor.
Okay. Yeah, I think, you know, certainly from the perspective of what the Planning Commission weighed as well, the previous home was present and actually was closer into the setback. So this is, you know, less of a variance ask than was originally granted. And so, Steph, for clarification, CUPs run with the land. So regardless of what happens, that CUP always exists. But here with the variance, once, when a variance is granted, when the house or the structure is no longer present, that variance is null and void, correct?
Yes. I would say the best way to phrase it is that the variance is granted for that specific encroachment in 2006. And so, you know, since this is a different encroachment, a separate variance is required.
Okay. Very good. And I agree that with my colleagues, you know, this isn't going to impact, adversely impact the neighborhood and/or certainly the character. So I too am in favor. Very good. So who would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 19-2024, approving the setback variance at 425 Highcroft Road?
I'd like to make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And a second?
Second. Somebody going to read it?
I just did.
That was quick.
When he made it. Yeah.
You blinked.
You blinked. So we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. All right. That takes us to our final item under new business. But before we get to that, I would like to just make a quick statement with regard to the variance we just approved. You know, I just want to, you know, thank the applicants and the homeowners for their patience. I know that building alone can be stressful. And when hiccups like this happen, I can imagine how stressful that is. And then it adds time and expense. So thank you for seeing the process through and for your patience and understanding. And we are very excited to see the house come into its full glory as construction continues. So thank you. Thank you to staff, and thank you to the homeowners. So. All right. Last item under new business, and that is item 8C. To consider amendment to special event permit for WHAMFest to amend live music times from 5:00 to 10:30 PM to 6:30 to 11:00 PM. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just do a quick intro to this, and then I'll ask Rick Born, the applicant, to come on and come up to the podium and provide his perspective. But ultimately, earlier this year, earlier this year, the council approved the Second Annual WHAM Festival for June 24th and June 22nd. If you remember back then, the biggest discussion was around two areas. One was just the hours of operation and how late was the council comfortable in having the music go, especially, you know, there was some complaints received after last year's event. It's the summer solstice, so the performances are wanting to maximize the darkness, which really doesn't start until, you know, 9:00, 9:30. So noise, hours of operations was one big item, and then noise, just that how loud it was going to be. Because again, we saw complaints, received many complaints last year. Ultimately, after a lot of discussion, the council approved the event for the hours of 5:00 PM to 10:30 PM. A lot of discussion on that 10:30, but it was definitive. That's when it would need to stop. And then as a part of the noise concerns, the condition of approval was that a noise mitigation plan would have to be submitted and reviewed by staff to assure that it met, you know, the intent of the approval of the council. So fast forward until now, events planning on moving forward in a couple weeks. The applicant did contact staff and said there is a concern about the hours of operations and pleaded and really wanted to see what could be done in order to allow the music to change from 6, from 5:00 to 10:30 to 6:30 to 11:00 PM. So starting about an hour and a half later, ending about a half hour later, which at the time of the council conversation was a little bit more than the council was willing to approve. So I guess that's kind of the area where there's more discussion needed tonight. We didn't feel comfortable allowing that administratively, so that we asked Mr. Born to come in and kind of provide some context. The permit fee has been paid. That wasn't, that's new. So we made sure to get a fee or funds for the permit. And then also, we did just receive the noise mitigation plan, which we're in the process of reviewing. It looks reasonable. It looks like it will address the concerns. So those updates have been made, and so we feel confident, aside from when it stops, that we're, that the applicant has met all the demands requested of him for this event. So with that, if it's okay, Madam Mayor, I would ask Mr. Born to come up and kind of provide his perspective on the request.
Great. Before we get to that, Steph, any questions of staff? Yes, Councilmember McDowell?
Yeah, Madam Chair, can you, you said that, wait, when the applicant originally asked for this, the times were what? And now there, you know, there was a part there where I wasn't quite following what you said.
Sure. I think originally, the applicant wanted to have the hours of operations between 5:00 and 11:00. Ultimately, what the council was more comfortable with, based on concerns we heard last year, was that it could start at 5:00. That was fine. But it really needed to be done with music at 10:30. Because that means, you know, music's done at 10:30, then people filter out. That takes a while. So I think the goal of the council was that- So I think the goal of the council was that it should be, you know, quiet around here no later than 11:00, knowing that the music would have to be done at 10:30. That is, that is a concern now, after working with the performers by Mr. Born, that they need a little bit more time.
Thank you. As I recall the conversation, in speaking with Chief Schultz, our police chief in Public Works, I mean, it, once the music concludes, getting all the people to disperse and out of town or out of the city, it takes some time, and they're not necessarily tiptoeing around. So there were some, some concerns there. Any other questions of staff before we invite Mr. Born out? No, Mr. Born. Good evening. If you could please introduce yourself with your name and address.
Yes, I would love to. My name is Rick Born. I'm a business owner in Wayzetta, and the applicant for this, this request. Madam Mayor and council, thanks for considering this. We've talked a lot about this show, in these shows, and I appreciate the support that this council has provided for them. A couple things, let's start just with the, with the timing of it. You know, we've done the Beach Bash forever, 11 years now, and one WhamFest and a couple other smaller things, and it's always been 11 o'clock shutdown time, music off by 11:00. We've always done our best to try to get it done before then, and we've been successful almost all the times. I was somewhat confident that we'd be able to do it again this time. The problem is, it is literally the summer solstice, and one of the acts, it's a public forum, so I'll be careful, they're, they're demanding. And it says right in their contract that they, under no circumstances, will play during daylight hours, because they have a substantial production that goes on with it. Laser lights, for those of you who were there last year, you saw it. It's a substantial show, and it just doesn't, doesn't play well when it's light outside. So that, that was their challenge with it. They really didn't want to go until 10:00, and I said, that's, that's not going to happen. Sunset's about eight, I think it's nine, nine, 10:00 or so that day. By the time it finally gets started, it's about 9:30. They've agreed to go on at 9:25 and be done by 10:55, and this is just the one act, this is the act for Friday night. Saturdays, they have the same concerns, but they're not as demanding. So that is the request there. You know, if it's an overcast day like this, perhaps we can start early, and we'll certainly try to do those things like we have in the past. But that's the ask for that, is to try to get to 10, you know, 10:55 or 11:00, you know, music off for sure. One of the good things was, we learned last year, we had the biggest crowd we've ever had there on Saturday night, and rain helped us, but we got everybody out of there in about 13 minutes, now safely, orderly, and everything else. So I can tell you that I don't think that we will be having the same level of attendance as we had last year, just by ticket sales. It looks a little bit lighter, so that will also help in, you know, hopefully getting people out sooner. So that's that. Now let me just kind of transition to the noise mitigation and everything else. I'll say that, you know, I certainly understand, and it's certainly warranted, we have calluses from last year, that first night was too loud. You know, I believe that we took substantial steps on Saturday morning with what we learned on Friday night, and I don't believe we had any or very few concerns with level of noise on Saturday night. And that was as simple as telling people, don't, don't play it so loud, you know, we gotta fix this. And they obliged. You know, one of the things we did this year is, is we've contractually put in their, in their contracts that they cannot exceed 105 decibels at any point. If they do, it risks shutting the showdown, and we would like to have them be at under 100 decibels, at least parts of the show throughout most of it, so. So that's a step in the right direction, I believe. We've instructed our sound crew, the way this works is, is we have a production company, Eternal Systems, that comes and sets everything up and brings the stage sound lights and all the production. And they basically hand the keys over to the, the artist's team at that point. The artists know that we will have, Eternal will be there, and they basically have an override, you know. They can just basically go down and turn it down. If it gets too loud, they will turn it down. And they learned from last year, and we learned from last year, and again, I don't think there was the issues we had Friday night on Saturday. We've instructed the opening acts that they can at no time exceed 99 decibels, and that it will slowly ramp up. So the proposal was that, you know, for me just to come in and ask for, you know, another half an hour, I thought it would be a fair ask if, we said, we won't start it for an hour and a half later, you know. There will be music there, it'll be low, you know, not a DJ, not a performer or anything, at least, you know, like you walk into a concert, there'll be some, some music there, but it'll be a very low decibel. And then, so the opening sets would, you know, would, would ramp up, but never over 99 decibels. The, I'm not a technology guy, like I said, I'm, I'm not a music technology guy. And the production team will bring you subs with a phasing capability, and it's a relay, they, again, they learned from last, last year what happened, and the phasing capability allows it to catch up, and they don't need to have the subs as loud with this, because it won't be fighting over the high end. Again, this is being, I'm generalizing here. And they're confident that it will allow the majority of the sound to go out towards the lake versus backwards towards the condos and apartments behind us. We will also be hanging absorption, noise absorption barrier behind, underneath the stage, behind the subwoofers that line the bottom of the stage, to try to muffle that sound, what does leak backwards. And then finally, which we didn't do last year, we'll have some of the semis and the production trucks behind it as well, to try to again buffer some of that, that low end that goes out that way. So that's, you know, I think we have a pretty good plan. Our team feels really good about it, you know, that we won't have those kinds of issues we had on Friday night. But then again, you know, we all understand, it's a, it's a permitted public event, and it's not going to be like a normal Saturday night in Wayzetta. But I think everybody understands that, and it's for a short four hours, so we'll do our best to make sure that we are good neighbors to everybody, so.
Great, thank you, Mr. Born. Questions of the applicant? No? So my question to better understand how this transpired, when we were originally asked to consider the application, we were under the understanding that we needed to, to move forward and approve this, because there were contracts that were pending with, with the artists, and there was considerable discussion about the time. And now we're hearing there's an artist who's saying no, and it's in his contract, so I'm having a difficult time reconciling, there were contracts being signed months ago, and we gave our stipulations as to what we could do, and now here we are at the 11th hour, asking for a change. So can you help me understand all that?
As you recall, yeah, we have to make these, these arrangements, you know, months and months and months in advance. The city was going through, you know, changing in the permitting policy. I, I'll be honest, I made a, an assumption that, that we would get this through, and obviously, if we, if we wouldn't have passed, we would have shut the whole thing down, obviously. But I also made the assumption that, because we have 11 years of history with this, it's always been 11 o'clock, and that wouldn't be an issue, because it really hadn't been an issue for years, five or six years, I don't think we even had any issue. There's kind of just a staff okay with it. So that was the challenge. In, you know, in all honesty, I didn't even see it for about a month in the contract, that that was what they were, you know, there was, it's very clear that that's what they're asking for. You know, I thought maybe my persuasive skill, sales skills would be able to convince them to start at 9:00, can be done by 10:30, and it didn't land very well. So that's why I'm here pleading with the court here to, to allow a variance for 25 more minutes. I don't know if that's the right answer or not, but it's.
Well, yes, but, you know, I think from, I'll only speak for myself here, we did talk at length, right? We had special meetings to discuss how last year went. And while there is an 11-year history, we also have to recognize the fact that during those 11 years, there's been a lot of residential construction in areas that didn't exist previously, and new events that didn't, so last year's event in question that raised the ire of a few folks was a new event with a genre of music that was very new. So there was, there are a lot of learnings along the way. So I'm surprised to hear your powers of persuasion didn't work with your artists, because they tend to.
Me too.
Have success with them, Mr. Born.
You know, one thing I will say further, because we've done the two events, James J. Hill's Beach Bash, which has been more rock and country, there's no, there's no issue with, you know, nighttime there, because, I mean, fireworks off at like 8:00. One of the thoughts we've had, if we continue to do this, if the city allows us to continue to do this, is flip-flopping too. Do the country and rock in June, which makes it way easier for routing, for buying these bands, because the problem we've had is, by the time the fall comes around, they've all been, they've all been through the Twin Cities, and we don't have a shot at it. So that's been a challenge, while we've missed a couple of years with that. So that, that's, that's probably a better scenario if we're going, if we're going to continue to do two events, just flip-flopping them.
Sure. Well, I do, I do have to say, I appreciate the reduction in the number of hours. I think that plays a huge part as well. It's one thing to have to take in, you know, something that you didn't necessarily prescribe For four and a half hours versus six, or almost six, five and, so I do appreciate you taking that into consideration. You know, I think frankly, and certainly the noise mitigation, I'm not a sound engineer, so I can't speak to the steps you've taken, and whether that is going to be, especially in an outdoor venue, with wind and atmospheric changes, I don't know. So I think we'll definitely have to be flexible on that, in terms of, or I should say nimble, right? Depending on the feedback that folks are receiving. But quite honestly, I mean, where I'm reticent, besides my, my personal feelings of, you know, what the community responded to last year, is what staff was saying, you know, yes, it may have taken 13 minutes to get everybody out of your venue, your location, but then people have to walk to their cars, or go, they may go other places, and so it's up to our public safety folks in Public Works, right, to make sure they get around folks and, and usher people safely out of town. When is the, is this for, are you asking this for both nights?
The request is both nights. I am quite confident that I can get the other one to wrap up at 9:45, or 10:45, so it'll be a little less than, than, than the first one. And like I said, you know, we'll try to get them out, you know, and a lot of it will be dependent on the weather. If we had the same kind of weather we had last year that was coming in, you know, my regret was we didn't get the headliner Griffin out earlier, you know, so they could finish their show. So we'll monitor, we learned, you know, we'll, we'll monitor that closer.
When will you be breaking things down on Saturday? Is it that night, or is it the next day?
Both. I mean, it's, the stage and sound will, will come down, the roof will come down. Again, that's dependent on the weather as well.
The night of the event?
Yeah, they always bring the roof down. We've done that every year. There's no music, no sound, no anything else. And they're able, we've got, I don't know, 35 stagehands, so it happens pretty quick.
But it's not my concern of how quickly it happens, it's how much noise it generates when you've got things clinking and clanking around at, at that hour.
Yeah, we're sensitive to that, too. I don't know, and I don't have this data, but I don't know if we've had complaints on that in the, the years in the past, I don't know. They haven't been brought up to me at least, but they've been instructed to, you know, hey, we're here in the middle of a neighborhood here, you know, you can't be, you know, banging around and partying and everything else while you're doing this. And they want to get out of here, too. So they get it done, and they're, they're quite efficient at it, so.
Very good. Counsel, anything? Any thoughts? Any questions? Anyone?
I guess I could run through what my thoughts are on it.
Me too.
Well, I appreciate that there's music coming to Wayzetta, and that you're bringing it here. Are we wanting to do the evaluation here, or finish the conversation with Rick?
I think we've heard the proposal. Yeah, we're good.
I think it comes down, yeah, thanks. I think it comes down to, do we want music here or not? You know, some noise is something that I think will be part of it at least a few nights a year. I understand the concerns, I think we've got a good mitigation plan. I think Mr. Born is taking our concerns into account, which is very important. I think thinking about the community and moving the event, the light event to the fall is a really smart idea. Once again, taking the concerns of the community to heart, I say we give it a try and reevaluate after the fact. If the 11:00 PM isn't right, or there's, it's too loud, or there is other issues, then I think that will give us good reason to reevaluate next time.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Others?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Born, for being here and exploiting that. I'm very comfortable with this, I think there was a very good compromise that was being made here. Our reaction of reducing it from 11:00 to 10:30 was in reaction to the year before, which was a problem, but I think, I think everybody learned their lesson from that. And the fact that there was such a good sound mitigation plan presented and accepted by the city, I think we're probably okay with that. We'll see again, you know, but I think everybody's pretty sensitive to what needs to be done. So apparently this show, that, and I'm not familiar with the details, but the amount of darkness is part of the show. And so people that are coming here to enjoy the show want to enjoy all aspects of the show, and if that means extending it by half an hour to 11:00, which we've done in the years past, I think, why not?
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Parkhill and Councilmember Plekish as well. I took into consideration quite a bit that the country music stars get to play till 11:00, and that just seemed to be a big issue, so that was a, a good factor for me to consider. I also, I recall saying that music should start later in the evening on the onset last time, so I don't think you did it because I suggested it, but I'm glad to see that. I thought it started way too early last year, and caused a little, I just think it started too early last year, that's all I'm gonna say. So I am willing to take another stab at it as well.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I think we did learn a lot last year. I think we have definitely put in some, when we evaluated this, some measures in place to help protect those who don't care to be concertgoers necessarily. So, you know, part of that was also trying to ensure that people could enjoy their home and their solitude at a reasonable hour, and, and at the time, this council felt 10:30 was, was okay. For me, what, where I am comfortable with the proposal is because of the shortening of the amount of time. But that sound has got to be, we've, we've got to be on top of it all the entire time, and be just really cognizant of, you know, while it is a type of music that is played loudly to the point it rattles your fillings, I get it, your ears ring for days, I mean, that's part of. it rattles your fillings, I get it, your ears ring for days. I mean, that's part of, you know, the, the style of music. We have to balance that with, we're outdoors, right? And we're not outdoors in a metropolitan urban area. We're in a suburban area. And so, we've got to find that happy medium. So, I too will support this with the big caveat that I think we should assess how things went, talk about it, what went well, where do we still need to fine-tune things, and if it goes off the rails. Again, I mean, unfortunately, it likely puts events like this at risk, I mean, just going forward, which we don't want to see happen, because we have had 11 great years of wonderful entertainment, and for that, we're very grateful. So, all right. Excellent. Well, staff, do we need to make a motion? There we go. All right. Who wants to make a motion to approve the amended hours of the music for Wayzetta Art and Music Festival?
Madam Mayor, I'd clarify that it would be to, or from 6:30 to 11:00 PM.
Yes, from 6:30 to 11:00 PM. It was...
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. All right. We are done with New Business. City Manager's report is up next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be brief. I want to keep this night rolling. Busy workshop, so I appreciate your attention and time tonight. Just want to give a quick Panaway update. In the next two weeks, you should see work starting on the railroad crossings, which are really exciting, because it'll add additional safety measures across the corridor, so people can get through to the lake walk and the docks even more safer than they can now. That shouldn't take too, too long, just a couple of weeks. So, our goal is to be completed by the ribbon cutting. The other item is the actual lake walk itself. All the decking is, is complete now. There's a couple loose ends they still need to tie up, but for them, there's no, like, expansive areas that don't have decking now. Now, it's really just making sure all the nooks and crannies are, are filled in, and then completing the railing on the top. I was told earlier today that that would be complete by the end of the week. So, I'm, I'm hopeful, I'm crossing my fingers, that we will have an open lake walk at the end of this week. But I'll have another update tomorrow, so I'll keep you posted. But, and we'll, we'll let the community know as well. But assuming we get some good weather, you'll, you'll see the completed project in a couple of days.
Neat.
I, I would like scream and yell it off the rooftops, but I, I want to make sure that's going to happen.
Let's just get, yeah, let's just get to the end. We're so close.
It's so close.
We're so close. I know. Anything else?
No. Just thanks to staff and all our partners that are working on the lake walk. It's, it's been a journey, but we're almost there.
July 13th, big event. And the only other thing that I want to mention before we wrap up this evening is, I inadvertently omitted the fact, or mentioning the fact, that we had a workshop this evening, where we had a presentation, Discussion of Municipal Cannabis Dispensary Feasibility Study by Point Seven Group. Wow, that's hard to say. But it was a great discussion from 5:00 to 6:30 PM, where we learned a lot about the state of things, and, you know, if we are to venture down that path as a council. So, all right. Well, thank you. All right. Anybody else have any updates or items they would like to address? All right. Then how about a motion to adjourn?
So, move, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. In a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned.